Welcome to the Greenville City Council Candidate Forums. This forum is a joint production of Interbank's Media and the Daily Reflector. Please watch and listen to the candidates as they discuss issues pertinent to voters in the city of Greenville. Here is your host for this Greenville Candidate Forum, Bobby Burns, executive editor of the Daily Reflector.
Hello and welcome to the Greenville City Council Forum, brought to you by the Daily Reflector and Interbank's Media. The session features candidates for District 5 on the council, Les Robinson and Mike Tan. Only voters in District 5 can cast a ballot in this race. The session is scheduled for 30 minutes. Each candidate will have up to two minutes to answer questions. We will alternate which candidate answers first. Candidates will have a one-minute opening and two minutes to close. I will be asking questions and my colleague Mary Doring will be keeping time. We drew lots to determine which order the candidates will speak. With that, I want to thank both candidates for their participation, and we'll start off with an opening statement from Mr. Robinson.
Mr. Burns, thank you very much, and thank you for the Daily Reflector for providing this forum so we can speak and educate our citizens. First, I'd like you to know this: I'm a husband, a father of the three children, and a lifelong resident in Greenville. I'm a local attorney who's practiced here and served our citizens for over 39 years. During that period of time, I have developed invaluable relationships from a vast variety of people from all walks of life. I truly love this city, and I'm a relentless advocate for it. I'm honored to have served two terms as a representative for District 5. I'm asking for your vote to serve a third term so I can continue to be a relentless advocate for the citizens in District 5 as well as all of Greenville. And also, as you know, we want to grow Greenville greater. Thank you for the opportunity to serve you. I look forward to seeing you in the future.
Mr. Tan?
And I'm Mike Tan. I'm also the father. I've got two beautiful daughters and a brilliant wife. I'm a veteran, disabled veteran at that, and a retired member of the law enforcement community. While I don't have the 30-plus years of experience here in Greenville, we chose to move to Greenville. This is our home, and we want to make it better. I believe strongly that we need smart growth, not just any growth. We need safe streets, which is more than just policing, and that we need to build Greenville stronger. That means working across district lines.
Mr. Tan, first question goes to you. North Carolina is experiencing a boom in data center development as the use of artificial intelligence grows. Should the city change its regulations to promote more of this type of development? Why or why not? What other types of industries should the city encourage, and how should we do it?
Data centers are a weight on the electrical grid wherever they go. And we would have to defer that to the Greenville Utility Commission to see if they could actually support a data center here in this area. They also draw down other resources like water. While they do provide good jobs, it's a matter of can we as a city support them without negatively impacting other businesses and lives here in town? When it comes to other markets that we should be going after, I think we should look at Pitt Community College and see the great work they're doing with training our vocational trades in our young people. And we should market those young people and use them to bring in other businesses and enterprises.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, sir. Got it. Thank you very much. First, I'd like to say this: We know a couple of years ago there was a hot-button topic, the data centers, and that was the Bitcoin mining. And so in 2022, the city passed an ordinance that was very, very restrictive, in my opinion, made it so that that type of operation could really not really be viable in our city limits. Well, we went back in 2024 and made that even more strict, so in my humble opinion, I think it's pretty much regulated that out of business. Understand this: Data centers just don't include bit mining. We have to look at AI. Look at everything that's going electronic: our medical records, our hospital records, our courthouse records. We just went. There's a wide variety of businesses now that are going to these data centers that have to be processed: your banking transactions, your financial transactions, your DMV records. So we have to look forward down the road to be able to look at these types of investments and decide whether or not they're right for our county. Now, as to the drawdown of resources, I would tell you this: I'm the liaison for the Greenville Utilities Commission, and they are well-equipped to handle any data center that chooses to come here, should the citizens allow it, and we vote on that. But at the end, we don't rely just on data centers. We've got to be a variety of businesses. Anytime we go to one style of business, we limit opportunities. We've got to be able to court those in the community to bring in other businesses like Boviet Solar. A big, big improvement we just saw is the development east of the north of the river that we're going to have for the mega site. That's a huge opportunity for the citizens of Greenville. So what we've got to do is we can't look at just one area. We've got to look at a host of variety of businesses to bring here so we can have diversity and also make sure we're providing our citizens for an opportunity to have economic progress and earn good wages so we can have housing for them.
Mr. Robinson, the second question comes to you. State legislation passed last week greatly limits the ability of cities to regulate the size of U.S. and North Carolina flags, and if approved, nullifies steps Greenville has taken to enforce flag rules violated by Camping World. What signal is the legislature sending to property owners who violate city rules, and how should the city respond? And how should it address similar situations in the future?
Well, first thing, it's a great question. It's been very controversial. So number one, if those remember that when we had that manager before the city council from Camping World, I was very harsh on him about they had not even purchased a flag or the flagpole because the black letter rule of the law said you can't have a flag of that size. Well, this is very unique in the sense that a flag is very unique. It's not a piece of cloth. It's not a piece of cloth for red, white, and blue. It means so much to so many, which makes this issue so controversial. But if the city is to abide by law, they have to abide by the General Assembly's law. Now, that bill has passed both the Senate and the House, and it's now sitting on the governor's desk. If the governor signs that into law, then we're bound to follow that law, and that would render the issue moot. But looking on a bigger side of things, you know, I anticipate the litigation to fight that would be over $500,000 in four or five years. We've got the stoplight cameras to use as a benchmark for that. If we do that, do we want to spend that kind of money on this issue? And really, at the end of the day, here's what it's about. If we didn't have the General Assembly's law that went into effect, do we really want as a city to have a 180-foot crane sitting at the corner of Redbanks and Evans, taking down the American flag, with every single major news organization in the country here talking about that? If you want to stifle your business, then that's what you do. That's why I voted against a lawsuit, and I do believe that the bill, if the governor signs it, that will eliminate the issue and render it moot, and we can take those monies and move on to more important issues that our citizens deserve to accommodate.
Mr. Tan, would you like me to repeat the question?
I think I've got it. Thank you very much. So as a veteran, as somebody that's put his life on the line for this country, who's taken an oath, I drive by and look at that flag and watch it in the blue sky and the breeze, and it does something special to my heart. It really does. But then I think about what that oath really meant, and that oath is that we all abide by the law of the land, and the law of the land was the size of the flag. Now, let's take it a different direction. If this speed limit says it's 35 miles an hour, and because I'm a millionaire, I can drive 70 in that zone and break the law with impunity, then what does that say for our democracy? So I agree with the city council for enforcing all of the laws equally to all of the businesses. That being said, I do agree with Les that if the governor signs that bill, it's moot, and there's no sense in going forward. However, if the governor does not sign the bill and the veto does not get overridden, I think that we should proceed with making sure that Camping World follows the law of the land, that every other business in Greenville has to follow. Just because they're super rich doesn't mean they cannot follow the law.
Thank you. So question three goes to you, Mr. Tan. The city council this year maintained a city property tax rate of 39.54 cents, the lowest in 20 years, while adding services such as police and firefighting positions. How could the city have set a lower revenue-neutral rate of 36.85 cents while maintaining those public safety positions?
I'm going to answer a different question. The revenue-neutral whole concept is a con by certain people in government. We all deal with inflation in our everyday lives. We have higher food prices. We have higher energy prices. We have higher car insurance prices. All that goes up for us as individuals. The same is true for our city and our city workers: our police, our firefighter, our parks, everybody. The city's outgoing expenditures are going to increase. Right now, inflation rate is pegged with the new peg is 4% to 4.5% a year. Over five years, that's over 20% inflation in total. So what you're saying, when you're saying net neutral, is that we're not going to raise revenue, and we're going to somehow eat 20% less out of our budget. And that means fewer firefighters, fewer police officers, and worse roads. So I don't believe that anything that talks about net neutral should be where we're going. We should be smart with how we spend our money, which currently the city council is, but net neutral is a fallacy, just like trickle-down economics was.
Mr. Robinson, you want me to repeat the question?
No, sir. I've got it. Thank you very much. Let me say this to those watching: If you're paying the taxes, it's not a con. Because if you lower it even more, guess what you'll do? You'll pay less taxes. And I know, because I've talked to thousands of people in this city, that they are struggling to pay their taxes and the utility bills. And so anything we can do to try and reduce that, we should help. So let's talk about what it really is. So trying to make it revenue-neutral, what does that mean? That means when your property values went up, we're trying to reduce the tax rate so that the taxes equal the last time we taxed. That's what it's all about. In other words, your property values went up, not because of the city. We didn't evaluate your property. The county did. So when your property values went up, what we try to do as a city council is to take some of that hurt and that sting and those dollars away from you by lowering the tax rate. We didn't go revenue-neutral. But if we did, it would have helped you even more. But the truth of it is, how do we grow our tax base? How do we put more money in the coffers so we can do more things? It's real simple. We've got to grow Greenville. If we have more tax base, we can tax it. Give you a prime example: There was a lot of controversy on a prowl on 10th Street. There were some on the council that did not want to annex it, even though everything around it was in the city. If we had not annexed that, we would have lost $30 million in property that we can tax. It's that kind of understanding that hurts our citizens. So we need to grow our city. That's why I say grow at Greenville. That doesn't mean to grow it recklessly, but grow it with strategic partnerships in mind that serve all citizens. And when we grow the tax base, guess what? We can lower the taxes even more and still have more money in the coffers. It's as simple as that. If you're able to do more, you can tax less and have more money to spend to benefit our citizens.
Mr. Robinson, this question comes to you.
Yes, sir.
The city has taken a number of steps in recent years to increase the affordable housing stock, including most recently investing city funds in a community partnership to build 50 single-family homes in 10 years. What challenges remain in promoting affordable housing, and to what degree should the city and its tax dollars be involved?
That's great. We need to do more. We've done, we've made great strides, but we can do more. So let me give you an example. When I opened up, I said relationships. Thomas Taft Jr., local guy. Dustin Mills, Davenport family, local guy. I know both of them personally. They just built 180 affordable housings in the west side of Greenville. 180. Think about that. They've done 55 more. They're one of the top 40 affordable housing developers in the entire country. They're local guys right here. That's what I talk about when I speak of the relationships. As we just spoke, more local relationships. So we wanted to build 10 houses, five houses in 10 years. And so we started coming up with this idea, but guess what? Those relationships again came into play. Instead of asking $75,000 from that private group, those members said you need to ask for a million. And so then we got Pitt Community College involved in it because we wanted to grow that trade school, the construction program at PCC, which is phenomenal, but it smacks out. So some local people, Lawrence Davenport, Parker Overton, those folks, they came together in a group and said, hey, we can grow PCC's construction program. Let's do this. Let's build the houses on site, take away the profit that would go to a contractor, pour that back into down payment assistance. Instead of building 10, let's build 50. It's that kind of thought process, those kinds of partnerships that will grow this city to be greater. That's what I'm good at building, and that's what we can do. So yes, we've made great strides in the last couple of years for affordable housing and to get those people into homeownership because that's a great thing. We can do a lot more, and I look forward to making that happen.
Mr. Tan, would you like me to repeat it?
Please.
The city has taken a number of steps in recent years to increase the affordable housing stock, including most recently investing city funds in a community partnership to build 50 single-family homes in 10 years. What challenges remain in promoting affordable housing, and to what degree should the city and its tax dollars be involved?
Well, I think we have to start off by defining affordable housing. The median income for a family in Greenville is $50,000 a year. Using the 30% rule, that's $1,200 a month that they should be able to pay for rent. The average single-income family's income, or the median income for a single family is $29,000 a year, which means affordable housing should be somewhere south of $700 a month. Now, the city council just approved affordable housing that costs $1,400 to $1,500 a month, which is outside of what our median income folks can earn. Now, I know Mr. Robinson has all these contacts with the big-time developers, but have you driven around these developments? How many developments of multiple hundred apartment buildings and houses are there parks? Are there places for our kids to do things at? So yeah, they're throwing us nickels and dimes to help with this project with Pitt Community College, which is great and a good start. But we need to hold them accountable for the lifestyle of Greenville and use those, make them, if you want to build here, you've got to build for our people, not for your profits.
Mr. Tan, next question comes to you. The city's parks and greenways have seen tremendous growth and expansion over the last decade or more. How does this benefit the city, and what more needs to be done?
Well, I met with Sierra Club after the last city council meeting, and they have great ideas for our green canopy here. The green canopy that we have throughout Greenville is what, one of the things that drew my family to Greenville in the first place. Besides adding beauty, it adds clean air, it cleans pollution, and it is, just makes Greenville one of the, makes Greenville green. That being said, there's a lot to be done. We have all these developments going on. Some of these developments are cutting down these trees that have been here forever. The Sierra Club and the ordinance that they're backing puts a limit on that, but we really need to put teeth behind that limit. We need to make sure that when a developer wants to come in and develop property, how much old-growth trees, for lack of a better term, that we want to retain versus putting twigs in the ground, that's going to look this way in 20 years, it'll look good. So the bottom line is, we need to keep Greenville green, have our arborists make sure that builders are building within the ordinances that we have, and that we put some teeth into that so when they don't, that we as a city have recourse.
Mr. Robinson?
Could you repeat the question? I want to make sure I get it dialed in.
Yes. The city's parks and greenways have seen tremendous growth and expansion over the last decade or more. How does the city, how does this benefit the city, and what more needs to be done?
Great. Greenways and parks are great because, number one, I know from practice in criminal law for 39 years, we've got to do things to keep our youth, when they get off the bus, give them an activity. And then just for our citizens as a whole, getting out in the air and walking and exercising and enjoying park activities, whether it's fishing or hiking or bike riding or just simply walking the trails, is invaluable. I mean, it gives us good mental health emotionally, physically. We're doing good. So we've done lots of things, again, lots of partnerships. Eddie Smith has done great contributions to Wildwood Park, River Park North. The greenway has expanded. We got some land from Harvey Lewis that donated for that. Again, those partnerships I keep talking about, invaluable. My vision is down the road, I'd love to see an expansion bridge go across the Tar River so that once you get onto the greenways at Town Commage, you can walk all the way out to Wildwood Park. Now, wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be something, to be able to walk or ride all the way out to Wildwood Park? I'm happy to announce that after three years of lobbying, we finally got a sports complex that's going to go on the north side of the river. Two good things about that: That's development on the north side of the river. It's great for our youth, and I can see the river area being a complex of sports ideas and recreational ideas and additional green spaces. But more importantly, guess what it does? It's projected to bring in between $40 and $42 million a year in local revenues. Now, if we kind of get into the trees that goes along with that, myself, I probably have planted probably 30,000 or 40,000 trees on my farm. Love them, help us the environment. But we have a statute that says to us from the General Assembly, we can't tell developers that you can't cut down trees. It's illegal to do that. So that's kind of a topic that relates to it, but I'd like to say more, but my time's up. Thank you very much.
Well, my next question follows into that, and it's for you, Mr. Robinson.
Great.
The council is scheduled to vote soon on a unified development ordinance. In response to public input, the UDO includes requirements meant to expand the city's tree canopy. Do you support regulations like the ones in the proposal that dictate how many trees someone has to include on the property they are developing? Why or why not?
Great. So to answer that question, great. I wish I had ESP, but apparently I must have. So yes, I do support planting trees back in vegetation. We've had that in our ordinances for a while. This kind of ramps it up a little bit, but again, we're kind of tied down because there's a statute that says you cannot order or direct a developer not to cut down a tree or not to clear-cut his lot. I mean, we can't do that. That's illegal. We can say if you have a site plan that we can say how much vegetation, how many trees you put on it to make it back. And one of the things we struggle with, guys got to remember, we were a farming town, so much of our land was farms. And so is the farmland like Tucker? That's nail a community. That was a farm. So we've got to go back and plant trees. And yes, I do support that because, again, personally, I planted thousands of trees on my farm, so I'm all for that. So yes, I do, but also I want to make sure we stay within the parameters of the law so we don't get ourselves in a lawsuit because we're ordering people to cut, to not cut down trees. But we can do a lot, and I do believe from developers I talk to, that they are generally interested in having a product that's attractive and looks good. So now we're starting to see development that has parks in them and trees and walking trails and those kinds of things. So I think developers really understand that, and they're starting to do it on their own, and certainly a development plan or ordinance that supports that, I get right along with. Thank you.
Mr. Tan, you sort of answered this question a little bit before, but do you support regulations in the UDO that restrict or actually require a greater number of trees planted on properties by developers?
I do. I do. You look in some of the subjects we have around town, they may have been on farmland. Some of them were clear-cut. Greenville is great because of the canopy we have here. That's one of the drawing points of living in eastern North Carolina. And I do not want to violate the law, however, whatever we can do within the law to increase the canopy that we have here. There are defined health benefits to having this kind of tree growth, and we need to actively pursue this.
You guys are pretty fast. Can I ask another question?
Sure. I'm all for it.
This was kind of a last-minute ad.
Here we go.
What role should the city council, wait, and it goes to you, Mr. Tan?
Okay.
What role should the city council play in helping Greenville, the Greenville community, navigate the increasingly harsh and violent political climate that is dividing the country?
Well, I think what the city council is currently doing works well. They lead by example. Even though Mr. Robinson, I don't agree on a lot of things, I have watched people across the aisle from him work together through their differences to come to solutions. And there's not a lot of acrimony, at least not publicly, and they're not egging on these calls for violence that we have in this country right now. And so I think the leadership by example of the city council is a great way to go, and I would, I would continue, I would attempt to continue to do that as well. I am the co-founder and current chair of Greenville, North Carolina 5501. We are a non-violent, pro-Constitution, pro-democracy group, and after the Charlie Kirk assassination, we discussed about how to address that issue. And instead of addressing the issue hands-on, we decided to do a homeless support drive this last weekend, where we had multiple hundreds of people donate clothing and food to help feed and clothe their homeless. We gave out ponchos and backpacks, canned goods, underwear, feminine hygiene products, and then what was, we started with, I want to say over 1,000 items. At the end of the day, with all the people, all the great people here in Greenville donating, we ended up with almost the same amount of items that we donated to the Center for Family, Center for the Prevention of Family Violence here in town. And we just have to keep the lid on things and realize we're all human beings and talk to each other that way.
Mr. Robinson, what role should the city council play in helping the Greenville community navigate the increasingly harsh and violent political climate that is dividing the country?
Bobby, that's a great question. I'm so glad that you added that to the content. First off, I want to say this: Citizen councils, members, it is not politics. It's not whether you're a Republican or a Democrat, it's about helping the people. That's what it really boils down to. And as I've said since the day one I came on, I'll go anywhere, anyplace, anytime, with anybody in this city to talk about a problem. Because we know that by talking about things and coming to the table, even if we disagree, that that tends to be civil and not go the other way. And just at the last council meeting and closing statements, I made a comment that there are people out there that celebrated that man's death. I mean, he now has a widow, and he has orphaned children, and there are people out there celebrating that and commenting on that. I mean, that kind of speech, we've got to, as leaders, stand up, be bold, and say, that's not appropriate. We're not going to tolerate that kind of comment and that kind of hateful speech. Mike and I just pointed out, he said, we cannot agree on everything, but we can be civil, we can sit down at the table, and to grow forward, that's what we've got to do. That's what we've got to do to grow our city great. But we as leaders have to demonstrate that we can lead by example and sit down at the table and say that this type of speech is not going to be tolerated. We're not going to give you a platform to do that, and we're not going to tolerate it. And we have to balance that against the First Amendment right to say things, but we can also say we don't like it, we don't condone it, and we've got to really take the message of unity and say this is what we're about. Because 39 years, I've dealt this. Problem comes in, I've got a skill set to go solve that problem, and I go work with people on the other side of the table from me to try and work that problem out and do it in a civil way. We can't go in the courtroom and have fisticuffs and stuff. And I use that skill set to navigate what we're trying to do for the citizens of Greenville as we try to grow this great city even better.
Thank you. And with that, we will go to the closing statements, and we will, each candidate will have two minutes, and we'll start with you, Mr. Tan.
Okay. Mr. Burns, I'd like to end up by thanking you and the Reflector for putting this event on. It allows us to paint a picture of ourselves to a greater audience, and it's a key portion of democracy. An informed voter base will make better decisions. I think we painted, the two of us have painted pictures of our views for the future and that we, that we can go forward as a city one of two ways. I believe in people, and that people are the way, we need to focus our energies, that the, when you look at who is behind which candidate, you will see that I am supported at the low levels. I'm out there in Bancroft, in Sterling Point. I'm walking Davenport Farms, talking to people, learning what they're about, and that I hope that comes through, that that is my goal, is represent all the people in District 5 and to work across the aisle with all the other districts and the mayor and the councilwoman at large to make sure that Greenville keeps going in the direction it's been going.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Thank you again to the Daily Reflector, and Bobby, thank you for the questions. First, I want to say this: I've been here all my life, my entire life. I've worked here 39 years. I have developed so many valuable relationships from all walks of life, and they have helped me accomplish many things, not only in my practice, but also the city council. When I came on, I wanted to do two things primarily. I wanted to get our police officer vacancies from 40 down to a zero number. We've made great strides. My other thing was to get a sports complex. But also focused on what we've done. And if you, I'll be glad to add to my website, there are four pages of accomplishments I've done. I can't go through them in the two minutes while we're here. But what I can say is this: I work with anybody, anywhere, anyplace, anytime. That's been my reputation, that's been my character, and those who know me know that I am relentless when I get on a task. I do not go away, and I will not relent, whether it's in the Brown Cemetery, which I've worked on, sewer caps, bicycles, speeders, north of the river, medical complexes, sports complexes, you name it, I've done it. The mega site, we keep working. I bring this style of energy and the relationships because what we've got to do is not relationships just here. just here. We've got to build them in Raleigh, because Raleigh's not giving Greenville what we deserve in terms of funds for our infrastructure and our roads, and also DC. We're building relationships. The county commissioners are working with the city, and the city managers coming with the county managers, and the business people are coming together, the medical people are coming together, University and Philip Rogers, which I've known since I was a little boy, we're all coming together. I build these relationships every single week by trying to meet with people and try and get our due from Raleigh. I look forward to doing that during a third term.